Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Real quick, I don't know if you should be the one that I should ask this question on the borrowing of the money for the preservation program. And I see Mr. DeBo still here. My question was, there were two parts. One was the, and I know you're handling the borrowing for the grant program.
Right.
We've done with PI DC.
That's correct.
But the second part, there was the loan program that I understand that there were some concerns raised by the administration. And I'm not sure if it was from your office or from the finance department.
I can tell you, I am working with tax counsel and Greg Heller.
Bring that little closer, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Bad little call. I've been working with tax counsel, outside tax counsel, and Greg Heller on the loan program, the loan portion of it, to figure out the best way and the cheapest way for the city so we can figure out how to lay it out.
So are we moving towards coming up with a...
We are working on it, yes.
Not trying to figure out why it can't happen?
Not why it can't happen, but how...
How we can get it done.
The cheapest way that we can actually make it happen, yes.
All right, okay, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask that question before Mr. DeBo left, because I wasn't sure who would be able to...
We can ask him to have a seat if you want.
All right, that's fine, no, I'm good. So I'm sorry, please proceed with your testimony, ma'am.
Excuse me. We're good, thank you. I'm sorry, we were pricing a bond deal also.
No, it's all good.
Well, good afternoon, Council President Clark and members of council. I'm Rashia Johnson, City Treasurer. Joining me today is Christian Dunbar, Deputy City Treasurer, and Matthew Bowman, Executive Director of the Sinking Fund Commission. I'm pleased to provide my testimony on the City Treasurer's Office and the Sinking Fund Commission for fiscal year 2018 operating budget. The proposed fiscal year 2018 general fund budget totals $1.2 million, increase of $14,771 over fiscal year 2017. Estimated obligation levels, the increase is driven by raises for DC 33 and exempt employees and restoration of the Class 200 to their original budget levels. Under debt management, the CTO continues to maximize the value received for new finances while reducing the city's debt service payments with continuous monitoring for refunding opportunity. CTO plans to issue debt through six to seven transactions in FY '17 and FY '18. Those transactions include the proposed Philadelphia Water Department new money, which we priced today, as well as next week we'll plan to price the Philadelphia Municipal Authority refunding for savings. In FY '18, the proposed debt transactions include a general obligation new money, gas work revenue bonds, as well as the paid affordable housing program, the BSRP, and the paid rebuild community infrastructure program, that's assuming the PBT litigation is resolved, as well as a tax and revenue anticipation note. The city continues to be in compliance in all material respects with regards to a continuing disclosure for prior obligations issued. CTO plans to continue the regular review, update, and implementation of new policies, procedures to ensure the city's continued compliance with all SEC and IRS regulations. CTO plans to implement a comprehensive investor outreach program. The goal is to better inform the investor community about the city and its goals and initiatives. Based on our experience, we believe improved relationships and a better understanding can result in lower interest costs for the city's bonds. The city's expanded investor outreach program aims to increase the number of investors in an effort to lower the city's cost of debt by increasing demand for the city's bonds. The CTO manages the city's credit relationships with the three major credit agencies. The city recently received negative outlook changes from two of the three rating agencies. In explaining these negative outlooks, the rating agencies stress the city's continued challenges with its relatively low fund balances, and currently the city is rated A in all three categories by the three agencies. In FY 2016, CTO, with assistance of the city's payroll department, began to reduce the number of weekly payroll checks distributed by the introduction of a new debit payroll program in a campaign to enroll more city employees into the direct deposit program. Since the start of the program, city employees inclusive of DC 33 and those employees in exempt and nonrepresented classes have been successfully converted into either direct deposit or payroll card programs. During this program, approximately 2,478 employees have converted from paper checks to either direct deposit or the payroll card program. During FY '18, the program will focus on those employees who have not yet made the conversion to electronic payments. Also in FY '18, CTO will be working with the Office of Innovation and Technology on the procurement and implementation of a treasury management system. A TMS will provide the CTO with the ability to automate and add more control around the cash management process that are highly manual and spreadsheet dependent. Another key benefit of a TMS is a centralized, secure, and standardized system for administering approximately 300 bank and investment accounts that the city holds. This centralization will ensure that the authorized users of the accounts are routinely updated and monitored and would allow the city to provide a more in-depth review of commercial banking fees in ensuring the city is being provided services that are beneficial pricing and also a lot for more timely audit of fees actually charged versus negotiated In addition, the Sinking Fund Commission oversees the timely repayment of the bonds' principal and interest on the city-related debt, service agreement, and lease obligation. The city currently has $7.5 billion of outstanding debt as of February 28, 2017. The total fiscal year 2018 debt service budget is $702.7 million, which is an increase of $63.4 million or 9.3% over the estimated obligations for FY 2017. I appreciate this opportunity to provide testimony regarding the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget for the Office of the Treasurer and Sinking Fund Commission, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that council may have at this time.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Couple of questions. Page three, your testimonies show a MWDBE contract participation goal of 30%.
Yeah.
However, your participation rate in '16 ended with 22% and '17 shows 19% achieved so far, so we're in this downward trim. So is there a plan to not only slow the decline, but to enhance your numbers?
The 19% is as of, for FY, for this fiscal year, is as of December 31st, and there were some, for our office outside of contracts, a lot of our participation comes with the bond deals, and because of what happened with the post-election, some of our bond deals were pushed back into this calendar year, so like I said, we just priced one today, we have another one next week, so that will, the participation in those bond transactions will now be counted as we move forward, so that will help that number to go up, yes.
How high?
How high? I will have to get you the...
Yes, I mean, yeah, I need to know that, I mean...
Yep, I'll get you the...
It would have to be a significant transaction in terms of participation, MBWDBE to get it...
Understood, yeah.
To your projected goal of 30.
Yep, and that's another thing we're looking at, that number of 30%, but no, we are definitely monitoring it to make sure that we can get that number improved.
Right, but the question is, if you don't reach, if you say you come in with the numbers and it's 22, is there a plan to increase it?
Yes, we are looking at our contracts. Just for example, we had one contract that we just had to re-RFP that did not have, historically did not have MBWBE component to it, that we just added to one of our contracts that we just...
You're working with OEO and the Office of Diversity?
That's correct, yes.
All right, okay. City's been warned, and we've talked about it today, about its current trajectory leaving and open to a credit downgrade based on our numbers. Can you tell me how a credit downgrade could potentially impact our ability to issue bonds?
A credit downgrade, because we are in the A category, we will, if we are downgraded a notch or so below, it will cost us more. And right now, rough estimates for every notch would be approximately about $1.5 million in additional debt service per year, in actual dollars that we would have to pay based upon a $100 million borrowing if we are downgraded.
So that puts more emphasis and importance on the subsequent questions that I know Councilman Don will ask about our downgrade in ratings, so I'll leave that to him, the details of that. One last question, we anticipate changing the institution that handles our payroll?
Yes, we put out an RFP and with the hopes of having ordinance introduced, yes.
All right, and the basis for that change?
Well, there were several problems, pricing was a factor in that, and saving monies.
All right, I mean, it was a good thing, right? We're saving money.
Yeah, saving money, yep.
You can talk about it, I checked, they said it was okay to bring it out publicly. So we did an analysis of institutions, and we got a good price...
That's correct.
...on our payroll contract, so we're going with the best price.
We're going with the best price that could provide the same, if not better, quality of work that we've been receiving historically, yes.
Okay, all right. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Madam Treasurer, and deputies, welcome. Couple of things. One, you deal with the money managers that handle our investments, correct?
That's correct.
Is it safe to say in the last administration, we lost a lot of money by way of some of those transactions?
Well, our money managers that handle our cash, no, because the one thing we do is try to protect and preserve principal, and for the city's cash, we do deal in a lot of short-term duration, so...
So that's separate?
That's separate from the pension, yes.
So you mentioned we had 300 accounts.
Yes.
Couple of years back, time flies, before you were there, we did a resolution looking at how we deposit in our overnight sweeps, you mentioned we had 300 accounts. Have we automated that to do more direct deposit of those accounts so that we maximize our short-term interests?
Mm-hmm.
So could you elaborate on how we've done that?
I'll have to get those numbers as far as how...
I mean, just systems, I don't need the exact numbers.
But those, yeah, those are our systems, those are kind of things that we put in place that allows, on the bank systems, those aren't our internal systems. The TMS would be our internal system, so we can work in the bank portals automatically. Instead of right now, what we do is take information from the bank portals in their system, and then we have to dump it into Excel and do a lot of manual calculation with regards to things.
So generally, when the revenue department gets money, are we looking to them to maximize the transfer of money? So for example, the state reimburses us for DHS, that's a considerable amount of money and a considerable amount of interest that we can earn. How are we maximizing those kinds of opportunities so that our balance stays right and we get a rate of return for our deposits?
So typically, I'm sorry, oh, thank you, Christian Dunbar, Deputy City Treasurer. So typically, our con cash account is where we receive most of our deposits, you know, it's sort of our catch-all account, and within that account, we have, any access we have in operating funds are automatically invested, you know, so we are actively managing our cash. Now, because we have such a short-duration portfolio and liquidity is a big issue with the city, the returns aren't great, but because of the vast amount of money that we do have just in terms of operating cash, we end up earning, you know, some funds on it, but...
Just round figures, on any given day, what is our available cash on hand?
So as of February 28th, our cash on hand, in terms of operating cash, was about $680 million.
And that fluctuates so quickly that we don't get, so is there a standard that you guys look for to make sure we're, because I've been around long enough to, when I was Deputy Finance Director, have to figure out on Monday who we're going to pay on Tuesday when it was tight. Have we gotten past those days? How are we managing our operating dollars?
What we do is we work closely with the Budget Office, and we do, we have monthly cash flows that budget works up, and we work closely with them, and then we take those internally, and we break those down to weekly based upon payrolls and all the various things, and we try to invest based upon that to make sure that we have enough dollars in-house to pay all the necessary payments that we have to make and meet all of our obligations, as well as what's being invested, so what's being invested can reap the benefit of earning some, you know, interest on it without having to be liquidated too early.
So to an extent, and I won't belabor it, I'd love to hear how you do it at some point, not today, but is there a way to work with the Budget Office to say if we're paying our fuel cost on the first of the month and we know that peaks and valleys of our cash flow occur at that same time, that that's a good thing, or can we adjust certain payments so that we don't take big peaks and valleys? Do you consider that?
We do do cash flow projections.
Our cash flows are based on revenues and expenditures based upon what you're specifically talking about, whether, you know, there's certain things that are paid, we know that there's certain payments that we have to make from revenue, you know, with certain times the money, the months, various monies come in.
I just want to thank you. I just wanted to get a sense of that. I remember there was an occasion where we received close to a million-dollar check, and it sat on a desk before you were there for close to a year. And I just, that nightmare in my mind of lost earnings is the thing that I will hopefully try to avoid and maximize our opportunity to get it in the bank, get short-term overnight sweeps, and do what we can.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. Good morning, Ms. Johnson and the rest of your staff. I wanted to publicly thank you for the assistance you provided, my office, and also last year when we did a briefing for members of council on some of the issues that come up in front of this body, also based on your years of experience both from working at PFM and Seibert, which is now I think Seibert-Cisionero-Shank, and Loop Capital, provide a unique perspective having worked for minority-owned investment banking firms, also working for a very prominent FA like PFM and your past experience as City Treasurer. So I want to thank you for the assistance you provide to my office. In addition, I know we've spoken about an initiative I'm working on to work with the National Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials and the National Association of Securities Professionals to put together a conference for elected officials in the region to learn more and dive in deeper regarding some of these issues, so thank you for your support in that regard. Looking at your budget testimony, I just had a question. I know this year, all of the major credits of the city are doing debt transactions, however, I did not see the airport listed in your testimony, and it's my understanding they are doing significant transaction this year. Am I correct in that regard?
That is correct, that they are doing a transaction, it's a new money as well as a refunding.
Correct, and so earlier in another meeting, I asked for this information, I just wanted to kind of just reiterate this for the record. Wanted to get a perspective, and you provided some of the information here regarding the proposed debt transactions for FY '17 as well as FY '18. Wanted to know, I know you internally have this information, wanted to know if you can provide that information regarding, for each of those credits, for those, you've already identified teams, know what the team is, who the team is on that transaction, and also when you anticipate going to market on these offerings, and then for proposed transactions, when do you anticipate putting together those teams, and also when do you anticipate going to market on those projects as well? If you could provide that information, that would be helpful.
Yes, yeah.
Because I think it would also provide information, especially for the teams you've already identified, and then for the proposed teams, you know, I know you use a rotational process with both council and also investment professionals, different institutions, that also could be good, because that would give a better perspective, I think, for this body, the diversity of firms that you anticipate using now that you're fully into your position as City Treasurer. And then one last comment, I know I spoke to Christian Dunbar in your office earlier, and you know, previously we had meetings regarding the concept of public bank. Look forward to looking at that information so we can review it in more detail and look at this concept going forward.
Okay.
So thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Just for the record, that we're kind of consolidating sinking fund and treasurer testimony and questions, so if there are any questions with respect to the sinking fund, we can ask these questions with this panel. Chair recognizes is Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly want to thank the Treasurer, her deputies, we work with Christian Dunbar, and he's a member of our commission as well, and so, and I want to thank her for briefings that she's provided to me. And my questions included, like, if we, but you kind of asked if we, our rating goes down, but you talk to Madam Treasurer like you try to do different things to bring it up.
Well, what we've been doing in conjunction with the Director of Finance, Rob DeBo, as well as with Anna Adams, every time something comes out, whether it's a quarterly manager's report, the five-year plan, operating budget briefing, whatever comes out, we have ongoing, even away from transactions, have ongoing conversations with the rating agencies to help them understand some of the initiatives that we're putting in place and what our end result and our goals are. So when things like that come out, we have just the ongoing dialogue to help them to understand better, so they just don't get the numbers that are on the paper, but the plan that's actually behind it. So I think that's one of the things that's been helpful to us moving forward as we look to issue the various that we have planned.
That's good, well, we want to say thank you again, thank you all again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have a couple of questions for you, but first, I just want to acknowledge your department, and I see Anna and Rob here, I think that, I didn't realize this, that the Government Finance Officers Association gave us a distinguished budget presentation award last year, so congratulations to you guys on that. I didn't know this budget was so distinguished, but I saw it in the front of this now. So let me just ask a few questions about, we got a slightly negative rating reduction, I guess, in September of this past year. What was the specific reason for that?
Well, in the write-up, what was mentioned was basically the pension unfunded balance as well as the, our low fund balance, so those, it's not one specific thing, but just kind of an ongoing trend, and it's not just Philadelphia, but a lot of large cities across the US.
But those were the two main issues.
That's correct.
And if I recall, Council President, we had a financial meeting, I don't remember when it was, maybe September or October, where actually Matt Stitt did a great presentation comparing our ratings to other cities across the country, and if I recall, we were at the second or third from the bottom in many of those categories, and it was because of fund balance and the pension. So I know all other cities have had issues, I think our issues are maybe more severe in that analysis comparing us to other cities. So whatever we can do to improve that bond rating, we have to do, it's like crucial. In that light, I wanted to make sure I understand, on page 75 of the Five-Year Plan, look, there's a chart that shows six different agencies, I guess, and it shows the debt, or actually, I guess it's the interest and principal of each agency. I want to make sure I understand this chart correctly. Just go at the top, it says 2018 GEO bonds.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the payments, or is that the actual balance? I believe it's the payments.
These are, this is the debt service payment.
That's the payment.
That's correct.
Okay, so what this chart's showing is we have six different places where we owe money, and this is the amount of principal interest we're paying every year, and it's reducing down, but it doesn't show the new borrowings blended in.
Right, this is just our current outstanding.
Right. Is there a way to add to this chart the current principal balance, the interest rate, and the term?
Yep, we could, what we have, and we could put together is based upon our planned future financings to add to that what it would look like.
If you were paying $445 million a year, you wouldn't want to know what your principal balance is, your interest rate, and the term of that loan. So I think, if we can get that chart, I would love to see that chart.
Well, what we can break out for you is the principal, the interest, the rate is kind of a blended rate, so each, of course, each maturity has a different rate, but I can show you what the interest is per year and break it out for existing as well as projected.
Let me back up for a minute. The GEO bonds have repaid $141 million in 2018. How much do we owe in total is what I'm questioning? What's the total outstanding obligation? You don't have to give it to me now, I'm asking for it in the chart form.
Sure.
I'm asking you to add some columns that say, this is how much, you know, we owe $100 million, this year we're paying $3 million down, so next year we'll owe 97. So I'd like to see the outstanding principal, the interest rate, and the term of that loan.
Okay.
The other question I had is, in the Five-Year Plan, there's a page that talks about a summary of general fund summary tables. Can you explain to me in fiscal year 16...
What page are you on? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, page 329. Is this under your department, the debt service?
That's under the sinking fund, that's correct.
So the debt service, Class 700, in fiscal year 16 is $132 million, and in fiscal year '22, it goes to $220 million, which is a 68% increase.
That's...
What's causing that? Because I understand that the bonds for rebuild are up in contracts and leases.
I'm sorry, what are you looking at?
I'm looking at Class 700, fiscal year 16, $132 million, and when we go out to 2022, it's $220 million. It increases 68%.
What that is, is a combination of new debt now, in the Class 700 is inclusive of airport as well as water, that's all that debt, as well as the GEO debt excluding any lease obligations and service agreements. So again, including in that is the future debt, and then we have some debt that was layered on that does not start amortizing until the 2020 fiscal year, so there's several things that make that number jump like that, but we can break that out for you as well.
Yeah, I'd like to see the analysis, because when you look at it as a number, it seems like a... like it's going up dramatically, dramatic, I mean, sixty-eight percent increase in six years.
Yeah, we can break that out for you.
Here's the other question I have, in the city's debt service policy that we have as a city, our target maximum is fifteen percent for tax-supported debt service, plus long-term obligations, as a percentage of general fund expenditures.
Mm-hmm.
However, in fiscal year fifteen, it was twenty-two percent, seven points higher. Do you know what our ratio is in fiscal seventeen, or what the target is for eighteen?
No, I can get what seventeen is, but, um, we can get what seventeen is, but that's one thing that we're currently looking at, our debt policy, to make sure, one, we are in compliance, and if not, maybe we should, you know, start to look at updating our debt policy to make sure that we're in compliant, um, in compliance with it.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. See, the pension brigade just came in, I'm impressed.
Very popular, yeah.
Yeah, uh, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, uh, good afternoon, I simply wanted to go on the record to say that I do appreciate and join my members who watch carefully to see what you're doing, appreciate the, the fine work you've done already, and, um, to my issue of, uh, pay equity and the like, my appreciation that you recognize that and have tried to be, uh, fair across your department in, in that way, it doesn't go unrecognized.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good work. Good. Is she good?
I'm done.
You're good?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President, I have another question, just, I want to get your opinion.
Okay.
Are you, you are Treasurer for the City of Philadelphia, are you concerned that the debt service is going up sixty-eight percent in the next six years, is that, have you looked at what all that's for, and are you concerned about that?
Well, again, you're looking at, um, the class seven hundred, but I look at each, each credit separately, so it shows a little different picture, and we'll break that out for you, how it looks, each individual credit versus holistically, and, um, and explain so, and each, uh, under each credit, within all of our debt, um, fifty percent of our debt rolls off within the next ten years, so, um, at this point, no, not too concerned about how it's layered in, but, uh-
But if fifty percent layers off, it's still going up sixty-eight percent, the bottom line is it's going up sixty-eight percent, we're incurring sixty-eight point percent more in debt than we had in twenty sixteen.
Well, we're not really, some of that debt is already existing, but it just doesn't start to amortize-
Okay.
-um, until later, so it's not that we're incurring all of this debt right now, so-
So getting us the schedule would be helpful on that?
Yeah, I also say the schedule will lay it out for you a little better.
Having that information to anyone making a decision about borrowing is very important, because if we're gonna, we're gonna put the city into debt further, okay, we should know what our obligations are for principal payments in later years out, so we can make an educated decision as to, do we want to even borrow more, knowing this principal's coming to hit us in the next couple of years.
At that time, well, fair enough.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman, um, that concludes the questions, and I thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
And your participation.